Do we have someone accepting the proclamation? I didn't have a chance to check my email. So, yeah, we just... Okay, great.
Curated a good gift. Yeah. Cesar Gaván. He is one who, you know, has suffered a lot and was able to wrap it around the bigger picture. Him and I sat down and talked about the other options of the rubberized mulch and of course, your conversation branched off from there. So, she's been fortunate enough to be able to share a few beers. I saw Bruce Carvajal, he just got back from Birmingham. Cesar.
Plus, you ever seen the light on?
I haven't seen it in person yet. Oh, no, I did at the parade. They had it at the parade this year.
Not only is it comfortable, but they're comfortable when you're there.
I saw the pictures and she had some big old trailer.
Mm-hmm. And maybe it's the big light on.
And you have two motors on the scissor ones.
Mm-hmm. It's just like a pretty kid.
Bigger toys.
But he's in January. He's got the big boat now where he likes to go back to Mississippi.
Boats. Shit.
I got six.
You got six? We have one minute to go. How can our Apple Watches and phones be off on each other? There we go. I'm going to call the meeting to order this evening. Councilmember Turner, would you lead us in pledge, please? You knew that was coming.
I did. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Mayor Bagby?
Present.
Present and positive. Are there any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda review.
Mayor, no changes to the agenda this evening?
Great, thank you. So, we'll move on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must come to the podium when advised by the mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized by the mayor. Would anyone like to come forward at this time and speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. The first one being a proclamation declaring September fifteenth, nineteen twenty nineteen through October fifteenth, twenty nineteen as Latino Heritage Month. City Manager?
Mayor, we, I believe we have representatives here to accept the proclamation this evening. I'd like to invite, if they're present in the audience, Adon Meza, Jesse Ortiz, and Cesar Gaván up to the speaker days. Mayor, the item tonight is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale proclaiming September fifteenth, twenty nineteen through October fifteenth, twenty nineteen as Latino Heritage Month. And it's your pleasure, if you'd like me to read the rest of the proclamation?
Please do.
Okay. Whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, President Lyndon B. Johnson first recognized Hispanic Heritage Week. Later, this was expanded to one month. And each successive president has continued this tradition declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Governor Gavin Newsom issued a proclamation September fifteenth declaring September fifteenth to October fifteenth, twenty nineteen as Latino Heritage Month in the state of California. And where Sonoma County has a long history of welcoming immigrants and is home to a growing multi-ethnic and multicultural Latino populations, including Cloverdale, which has grown over the past several years and now represent thirty-one point one percent of our citizens or approximately two thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine people in Cloverdale. And whereas the diverse Latino population of the county, Sonoma, makes a significant economic contribution and has profound positive influences on our community through strong commitment to family, faith, education, hard work, vibrant culture, and service. And whereas for over the past decade, Sonoma County Latino organizations and businesses have continued to foster the culture traditions to our communities by being active community members and focusing on the areas of education, health, wellness, and the local economy. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Cloverdale in deep appreciation to the diverse Latino population of our community hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Latino Heritage Month. So ordered by Mayor Bagby.
Oh, that's right, the press is not here.
Yeah. Make your own press.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. It's an honor to receive this on behalf of the Hispanic community of Cloverdale, especially myself, you know, being an immigrant child. This community gave, given me every opportunity from an education to the ability to play sports and now be a local business owner. So, I really appreciate it. The only thing I would say is it'd be nice to have a little more recognition on, for everyone, not just for certain individuals. Maybe some town event, maybe a Friday Night Live that has a Hispanic theme, something like that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Would anyone like to come forward and say a few words before we move on to the next proclamation? It's proclamation night here at the city council meeting. Oh, all right. Seeing none, we are going to move on to Boys and Girls Club presentation on the club activities and current funding status. I believe that's Michelle Edwards. Hi, Michelle, welcome. Thanks, thanks for making the trip.
Oh, my gosh, it's my pleasure. Thank you for having me. I have a lengthy five-hour presentation to share with you tonight. I'm just kidding. I will be brief, but I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the happenings at the Boys and Girls Club here in Cloverdale. And thank you, Mayor, for having me and councilmembers. And also, thank you to Councilmember Cruz who invited us and set us up and is also working with us on our Cloverdale Advisory Board. I will share with you a little bit about what we're up to, some changes that have happened at the club over the last couple of months and then talk about some things that we're looking ahead to. Can y'all see the presentation on the screen? Okay, great, so I'll just advance it and not worry too much about that. So, county-wide, well, organization-wide, we are serving young people in Sonoma and Marin Counties. We're looking at ten thousand young people a year at over forty locations. And that includes also serving over two hundred and fifty thousand meals to the young people that come to the Boys and Girls Club every day. So, during the summer, we serve breakfast and lunch. During the school year, we serve a full supper to every kid at the club who needs to eat. And we're in over twelve communities up and down the one-on-one, essentially from Cloverdale to the Golden Gate Bridge. So, we're serving a lot of kids, including those right here in Cloverdale. We do this through what we call our formula for impact. Essentially, we want to serve the young people in our community who need it most. We want them to have an outcome-driven club experience, which means that they are exposed to high-quality activities when they're with us, that we have targeted programs that suit their needs, and that they come often. Because we know that in order to change kids' lives, they have to be with us. And then if we do that, we want three primary things for the young people we serve. We want them to be academically successful, to make healthy life choices, and to develop good character. So, that is what we are after every single day. Here in Cloverdale, we are serving about three hundred and sixteen young people every single year. We're doing that in three locations. And this is an interesting thing a lot of people don't know. We have our own club building not too far from here. We're also on campus at Washington Middle School and on campus at Jefferson Elementary School. And so, that allows us to serve more young people because when our building gets full, we know there are still kids in need. And so, we want to be on campus to where they are. And you can see a little demographic information about the young people we serve. And Councilmember Cruz and I were having this conversation last week. We track this information because we know in our county, when young people come from single-parent homes or foster homes, when they're low income, or when they're of minority ethnicity, the outcomes are not as good for those young people. And so, we want to really do our part at the club to make sure that those young people have every opportunity to do just as well as their peers that might live with both parents or have higher income. And so, we're really working hard to make sure that we're serving the kids who need us most here in Cloverdale. I'm here tonight to share some good news. We have been working really hard with a dedicated group of people here in Cloverdale, and I'll share with you a little bit more about their work, to really be able to invite more young people into the club. So, three hundred and sixteen members sounds like a lot, but we have, for the last couple of years, had a waiting list. And Vice Mayor Walter has been with us in this conversation for a long time, Mayor Bagby. We have had over a hundred kids on the waiting list at various times because the club did not have enough spaces available that were non-fee-based. We were out of scholarships, even though there were a lot more kids that needed the club services. And so, we were doing a lot of work as a community to raise money for those young people. One of the things that we were doing was applying for grants so that we could continue to allow young people in. And I'm really happy to announce that we have secured a million dollars directly for the Cloverdale kids and the Cloverdale community to serve more spaces. This is through a federal grant program called Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers. And these dollars are specifically for Cloverdale. They're only for Cloverdale kids. Any kids that attend school in Cloverdale have access to the Boys and Girls Club now through this grant program. And we are so thrilled to partner with the school district and the community to bring these dollars here and to be able to serve more kids at the Boys and Girls Club because we know that they need it. This funding, I won't bore you with all the federal details, it's a lot of education code, which you can imagine is not that interesting. Essentially, this is part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which used to be called No Child Left Behind. And essentially, what we know is that kids need a place to learn and grow after school and during the summer and before school. And so, through this program federally, we are able to provide academic enrichment and other activities that complement the school day, extracurricular, pro-social activities, student services, family literacy, to really wrap our arms around all the families here in Cloverdale and make sure that they, that kids and families have their needs met. What that actually looks like practically, that's a lot of mumbo jumbo, is we get about two hundred and ten, a hundred thousand dollars for the next five years to serve forty-two or more kids in a before-school program. So, now, our club opens at six-thirty in the morning every single day, and the school bus comes and picks them up there and takes them to school, which is such a huge help for families that have long commutes, that don't know what to do with their young people. And the other beautiful thing about that is we get them over to school campus before breakfast. And so, that is a huge help to folks that got to get on the road to work. And so, that program started two weeks ago, so we're very excited about that. We also have space for another hundred young people after school at the clubhouse, or we keep our little kids, TK and kindergarteners, on campus at Jefferson. They're just not quite ready for that bus ride. And so, we can serve them there or over at the club, about a hundred more kids after school at free or low cost to families. And we'll be able to provide very low-cost summer camp to kids at fifty dollars for the summer. That will include breakfast and lunch and full daycare from seven AM to six PM at the clubhouse. And we are thrilled. And this is a guaranteed contract for five years. So, even though we know we got a little election sink isn't happening, you never quite know, this is locked in federally for the next five years. So, we're very excited to expand our services because we know there are so many young people in need. And when we were celebrating, Councilmember Cruz said, "You got to come tell us about it." And so, we're really thrilled. There are a couple of other funding streams that helped make all of this possible, so I just wanted to, since I have your captive attention for the next three hours, I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we're up to. Obviously, you all have been so generous in supporting the club, and former Councilmember Paula and Vice Mayor Walters was wonderful in helping support the club and the city. So, thank you for your ongoing support. And then there have been lots of other folks that have come together to support the club in the last couple of years. Supervisor Gore, supported from the county. Those funds went directly to the Cloverdale Club. And then we have lots of private philanthropy and Cloverdale Advisory Board that's helping us. We also partner with the school district to provide after-school services through a California Department of Education grant. It's called ACES, not to be confused with Adverse Childhood Experiences. This is a different, this is after-school safety and enrichment. And it's, it's, it's the state counterpart to the federal funding. And so, now, we've always had the state funding, now we have the federal component, which is very exciting. I'll tell you, this federal component, they receive about two hundred million dollars in asks a year, and they only can give out about sixteen million every year, and we got one. So, this is a really big deal for Cloverdale that we were able to secure this funding, and it was, we're really excited. And so, these two funding components go together and create a partnership to serve all kids after school, you know, K to eight, whoever needs it, which is really exciting. I'll tell you a little bit about our organization as a whole. As you know, over the years, the Boys and Girls Clubs all across Sonoma County has consolidated. And I wanted to share this with you because some of you have been with us for a very long time in this conversation. So, we are serving about ten thousand kids a year. That costs about ten million dollars, and you can see how that shakes out there. One of the things that is really important to us is that dollars designated to a particular community stay in that community. So, any dollar raised in Cloverdale stays in Cloverdale. And so, this grant that we received, million dollars, is specifically for Cloverdale kids. It can only be spent in Cloverdale, same with the other designated funding sources as well. Not surprising to you, you look at much bigger budgets than this, but the most expensive thing that we have is our people. Because in order to change kids' lives, we need the very best people we can get. And so, we are working really hard to provide high-quality jobs for folks that live in Cloverdale so they can work here and also so that they can invest in our young people and join us every single day at the club. And one of the great things about the new federal grant is it created a lot more positions for us. Part-time and full-time positions benefited right here in Cloverdale, which is great. We provide lots of programs that drive to our core outcome. I won't spend a lot of time here, but these programs are developed in partnership. We have over thirty-four academic success programs. Our goal is that any young person that comes to the club has their homework checked and completed every single day, so that when they go back to school the next day, they're completely prepared to learn, which is pretty incredible. Also, I don't know how many of you have looked at homework recently. It does not look like the homework that I had as a kid, and I can't do it. I'm a relatively smart person, and it is hard. So, we have trained professionals from the Sonoma County Office of Education, Superintendent Decker's team from Cloverdale do a great job working with us so that we can actually help the kids when they have questions. That's not my strong suit, but it's, it's difficult. I appreciate that, Councilmember, it's hard. So, we are working really hard to make sure that our programs are aligned to state standards and we understand what that means and can actually help the young people. Kids need to be successful in the classroom, but we also want them to be successful humans in the world, and so, we want them to make healthy life decisions. So, we offer sports, fitness, and, and healthy lifestyles programs to them. In addition, we serve those meals every single day. And I mention that because if you know any young person under the age of nineteen who needs to eat on a daily basis, please send them to the club. I think we're serving supper at about four-thirty every day. You can check in, that'll change in the summer. But please spread the word far and wide, any young person in Cloverdale who needs a full meal every day outside of school hours and during the summer is welcome at the club. And that's a really important part of making sure kids have full bellies so that they can be successful. And then also, we want them to be good members of our community, much like each of you. So, we invest in making sure that young people are making good choices after school, but also reintegrating to the school day. So, we're in conversations with the principals and the teachers to make sure that behavior is consistent, expectations are consistent. And so many of you have joined us each May at our clubhouse when we recognize each of our young people for their contributions to the community in our annual Youth of the Year celebration. So, I'll be back on the horn about inviting you to that at the end of the school year. But we like to bring our community together, celebrate with the young people. And not just young people who are super good at everything, but also kids who've tried really hard. Maybe they're not the best athlete or the best student, but they've worked really hard all year long, and we want to honor their effort, and we ask that each of you support them in that as well. All of this takes partners, and we have so many that show up for us every single day. And one of the benefits of a large organization like ours is we can leverage countywide partnerships for Cloverdale. And we can bring resources here that might not be available otherwise because we're making connections all across the county. So, we've had mobile iPad labs donated by John Jordan Foundation. We bring the free bookmobile of Sonoma County to the Cloverdale clubhouse so kids can have access to books in their homes, and the list goes on and on from there. We're able to take kids on hundreds of field trips a year. They play on sports teams all across the county because of our strong network of clubs that exists in the North County and beyond. We have an incredible group of people who have joined us here in Cloverdale to make all of this work possible. Last year, these folks helped us raise over seventy thousand dollars to create new partnerships. And so, we would be remiss if we didn't thank Councilmember Cruz, Councilmember Walters for joining us all year long, meeting after meeting, trying to think about, gosh, how do we shake the money trees, advocate for kids in this community, and really have done a beautiful job doing that. And obviously, lots of other friends that you know there. We are accepting new members. If anyone has just a lot of free time on their hands and wants to join us, we would love to have you. But these folks are working with us. As we look to the future, we definitely, now, our clubhouse that's serving so many more kids is going to need a lot of love. And so, that is our next task, to look at the capital needs of the building now that we've got the programming needs taken care of. One of the things that is top on the list is a new roof. So, we are in conversation. These folks are dialoguing with us about how we can raise those funds to replace the roof, replace the air conditioning and HVAC system, so that the club can remain a high-quality place for all the kids that we've got coming to it now, which is very exciting. This is my contact information. We would be delighted to have you out visiting the club. We would love if you would introduce us to your friends that might be interested in supporting kids in Cloverdale in this way. And if you have a lot of free time, come and volunteer with us and make the difference in the life of kids. There are so many young people here in Cloverdale that have grown up in the club and are now working with us, and it's really a lovely full circle to be a part of it. And so, we appreciate your ongoing support and are super excited to be able to invite more kids in. I'd be, I ran through that really fast because I want to make sure they'll have time to answer your questions. I know you've got a full agenda. But we couldn't be more delighted to be serving the community here in Cloverdale and working alongside of you for so long and hope that you'll join us with whatever time or talent or means that you have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Michelle.
Absolutely.
All right, so right now, are there any questions or comments from the council? And I'll start with Councilmember Cruz, since you've been pretty active with the club recently.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Michelle, and thank you to the community of Cloverdale for supporting Boys and Girls Club. I also would like to welcome the young boys that came in to say hello and to also accept the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. They go to Four Seas, which is another organization with which I work closely. And sometimes they go from Four Seas to Boys and Girls Club, and the boys go there. We had a playground ribbon cutting last week, and that was quite a joyful moment for all the individuals involved. Thank you again, and please keep coming to us.
I will, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
You know, just a, just a thank you, Michelle. It's quite obvious you know what you're doing. You do a very good job at it.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, and I know the youth of Cloverdale appreciate it. So, thank you for not forgetting us over the past few years.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just another thank you. It sounds like things are going gangbusters out there, and we appreciate it.
We're working hard at it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't echo the thanks enough. Niece that's been through the Cloverdale Club, she's aged into, aged out, I should say. She can do other things now, but always spoke very highly of it. Youth of the Year was awesome this year.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed seeing just kind of the recognition for all the different categories that the kids participated in. And really, young adults, that's what you guys are really contributing to, is the transition from children to young adults under your care. And I, I did have a look on my face when you talked about the trained folks for the homework, because a gal at work brought in her middle schooler's homework to a room full of college graduates, and all of us consulted Dr. Google more than we didn't.
Hundred percent, yes.
Completely understand where that's coming from. And just, please, keep, keep up this wonderful work. Our youth is benefiting from it greatly. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ashton, did you have anything to add?
Well, I know that I have a Boys and Girls Club at our county middle school. It was a wonderful experience, and it's nice to see you guys have come a long way, so thank you for your continued investment in youth.
Yeah, look, look what happened.
See, and now, student liaison. I only paid him twenty dollars. No, I'm just kidding.
That's right. Boys and Girls Club could lead to political interest, so we have to keep an eye on you guys. Would anyone else from the public, like, actually, I'm curious, anyone else have any parents or any kids who go to Boys and Girls Club right now? It's unusual. Any? Yeah. I know that they're out there in video land, so I just want to say thank you. You're doing an amazing job and keep it up. And I, last May was, I had more fun than the kids did. It was just, it was, so, yeah, anytime you need some help, you know, please call us. We're all interested in being involved. City Manager, did you have anything to add?
Mayor, I just wanted to note that the budget that the council adopted for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty did allocate funding to the Boys and Girls Club. I know council is very mindful of your financial resources, but you did find it necessary to support the, for good reason, support the Boys and Girls Club to the tune of ten thousand dollars in funding. And I just want to remind Michelle that that's an opportunity for us to, you know, cut a check. We just need something from you to request that funding, and we will work with our finance director to procure those funds for you.
Well, we are so grateful. Thank you so much. You're absolutely helping us invest in your young people, and we love doing it. So, it's, it's an absolute joy. And when Youth of the Year comes around, we'll make sure you all are invited, and we'll keep you in the loop up until now. If you are interested in keeping up on the day-to-day, make sure you follow us on all our social media. You'll see lots of fun videos, and Cloverdale Kids make appearances on there, so you're sure to see some familiar faces. But appreciate your kind words and, and your support over the years. It really means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just give the public another chant. Anybody else want to come forward and ask Michelle a question or? Okay, all right, seeing none, thank you very much. Drive carefully, stay cool. Great, and we're going to move on to item number three, the student liaison report. Ashton, what do you have for us?
Not much going on right now. Kids are still getting acclimated to the new school year. We have the yearly tradition of homecoming going on each, each year. Each year's worth of students is getting ready for their, and making their homecoming float based on what their year's student, or based on what their year's student government has decided they want to make it off of. Soccer games have been going well. I believe they've won, our soccer team has won most of the games that they've played. Yesterday, for the seniors at least, was Keith Hawkins Day. We had, I don't know if any of you know who he is, but we had a motivational speaker named Keith Hawkins come and try to upbuild the seniors and offer them encouragement and how to move on in life. Interact has just finished the river cleanup, I was told, and Interact and Key Club are, have just volunteered to participate in the Jefferson Carnival.
Great, thank you. All right, and we will move on to the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless a council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Anyone from the council interested in pulling a consent item?
Nope.
Okay, anyone? Would anyone from the public like to pull one of the consent items for consideration? Okay, then, would someone like to offer?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Yeah, that is why I made sure that someone had turned the AC on today, just in case.
I had a senior moment.
No, not at all. Great, thank you. Are there any communications for discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings, of which there are none, new business, of which there are none, and subcommittee items, of which there are none. So, we will move on to subcommittee reports. The airport is meeting next on October 1st. Finance Administration and Police. We had an adjustment there, didn't we? What did we, what did we settle on?
Mayor, correct. The regularly scheduled meeting for Thursday, September 26th has, and I noted it, it says 10 here, it actually should have said 4, has been canceled and rescheduled to Thursday, October 3rd.
Okay. And what time did we decide that was going to be?
I believe it's gonna continue at...
10 or 4?
You're the chair of the subcommittee.
I don't remember what I said. So, I guess, I guess, keep, keep, do you remember what we, were you?
I don't, wasn't there?
Well, it'll be posted on the website under that, under that subcommittee. So, Planning and Community Development, what do we have?
Yeah. So, the Planning and Community Development has its regularly scheduled meeting, October the 15th, 2019, at 4:00 p.m. Just a quick reminder, we are working on a special meeting in order to address the topic of building code for the energy use. And we are still landing on a date, but we are getting close. It's sounding quite possibly like the week of Take It, Kevin.
We could just do it on the regularly scheduled calendar, because we've had a little scheduling conflict. So, that would only be about a week later than what we were planning.
Okay. We'll just make sure we give it the time. All right. So, I'm fine with that. So, yeah. So, we're gonna, and I think I saw the gentleman whom I was working with on this in the crowd. I did, so we're gonna have that meeting on the 15th of October at 4:00 p.m. City Hall. So, that is the next, sorry, I've gone off the reservation here. Planning and Community Development, the next meeting will be October the 15th, 2019, 4:00 p.m. City Hall. Public Works, next meeting will be November the 26th, 4:00 p.m. City Hall.
So, Joint City and Fire District?
Well, according to this, October 14th, 5:30.
All right. And Joint City School District?
Vice Mayor Walter will have to go over for me, because we will be at the State Conference for the League of Cities.
Is that gonna work for you?
That'll be fine.
Great. Okay.
And that will be November, oh, no, wait. October 14th is the one, the Fire District.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm available either.
And then, November 18th. Okay.
And that will be Turner, too. And School District, November 18th.
Great. Council reports. Anyone have anything verbally?
Just that we did the, what was it called, Mexican Independence Day, right?
Oh, yes. We did the Mexican Independence Days.
That was fun. Water, water awareness, drainage, things like that. Don't let bad stuff go down the gutters, man.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the name of the game.
Russian River Watershed Association.
Yes. Creek to, street to creek.
That's right.
Yes. Street to creek awareness. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just have two things, if I could. Two thank yous to fellow councilmembers. Councilmember Brigham, thank you. The grange hall looks fantastic. If you haven't noticed, it has a new coat of paint on it. And the doors are gonna stay red. Am I getting that correct, or are they changing to blue?
No. They need one more coat. One more coat of red, and it's finished.
Good.
Next, we could work on the trees.
It looks nice. It looks like a little schoolhouse.
It does.
Instead of the old fire building from the fire station.
Inside and out, plus all of the windows in the main part of the building are now dual painted. That you can actually...
Get open?
And open.
And close.
And so, now, we're gonna have to raise the money to do the, about $1,000 to do the tree work. But we're all, we're, everything that you see is all paid for.
It's beautiful.
Looks good. And then, final thank you to Councilmember Cruz for continuing with her campaign pledge of reaching out to the Latino community and bringing them more into the folds of the city of Cloverdale. You're doing an excellent job on that. So, thank you.
All right. And I submitted my, my list in writing, so that will be in the packet for anyone who wants to see it. Is there, well, we have no attorney, so we probably have no list I can report. Are there any pressing issues, David, that we need to know about?
No pressing issues. Just to share with council that, and the community, that this was a challenging week because we were under threat of a public safety power shut-off. I think at this point in time, we are past the immediate threat that PG&E potentially had us under. It's obviously still warm and dry conditions out there. So, we want to encourage the community to continue fire-safe practices. But it looks like cooler weather is approaching us, hopefully fairly quickly. So, we hope the immediate threat will subside. But it looks like we've got past this initial issue of the potential shutdown of power, which required a fair amount of dedication of city and staff resources to prep for the potential that we would, we would have our power shut-off. And so, I really want to thank our staff for doing the work necessary to prepare for that event in case it did happen. But otherwise, I think it was a good exercise for us as staff to kind of go through that process and, you know, think about the things that we need, we need to do in the future to make sure that we are a resilient and safe community.
Great. Thank you. Take it. That's the city manager's report as well?
That's correct.
All right. Check and check. Did you have anything else?
Yes. I want to remind everybody that this Sunday, there's going to be the North Sonoma County Fire District Emergency Prepartness. And as of the first, we begin with the Be Prepared Cloverdale Workshops for emergency prepartness for all people in the community. There will be four seminars in Spanish, workshops, I should say, and four in English. The flyers are all over town and also in front of City Hall. So, please find one to attend. We require all of you to please attend.
We want them. We want them to.
So, that our money is worth spent. We want to make sure that everybody is ready and that they can take care of themselves, and they can help their neighbors if we have to face an emergency.
Yeah. Please come this Sunday, Citrus Fair, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., I believe. Is that right?
10 to 2.
10 to 2. So, and they have free stuff, so you have no excuse.
Maybe a wild and crazy three-year-old there around 10 a.m.
That's right.
So, we have some children in the audience that should enjoy that on Sunday.
Definitely come and get some free stuff. Okay. Anyone else have any announcements?
Thank you, though.
All right. All right. Seeing none, any council direction for future agenda items?
Hang on, a couple.
Sure.
Just a reminder that we've got the accessory dwelling unit, emergency ordinance kind of thing, is going to be up soon, or maybe has expired. I'm not sure. But we need to update that once a year. And also, I'm still looking forward to starting to schedule meetings for the homeless issue.
Homeless Task Force?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Haven't heard anything about that. I know you guys have been busy, and it's been a crazy week. But just want to stay rolling along.
So, on the ADU update, though, that is, I mean, that doesn't need to go to the subcommittee. That could come to the council because it's something we're...
At council's direction, we can bring it, we can bring it right back here.
I'd say let's just bring it straight back here.
I agree with that.
And Homeless Task Force, Kevin, you and, you have anything, do you have anything to say for yourself?
We need to pick a date and get going. We're thinking about it. We've been talking a lot about the agenda, so...
Yeah. I don't want to be pushy or anything, but I'm getting hit a lot by the community. What are we doing? What are we doing? And I should beat the hell out of me, you know?
Yeah. And Kevin's been handling a lot of very tough projects, and we really appreciate it. And I think we kind of slogged through, in addition to the PSPS issues this week, we've kind of slogged through some major things. So, yeah, we're looking forward to tackling the next task force, so.
Well, I, should I share a little trip?
Sure.
Okay. A community member invited us to see the portable showers at the Redwood Mission in Santa Rosa. So, Kevin and I went to see those. And we're looking for a partnership with the church to host this here in Cloverdale.
Thank you.
Free of charge.
Thanks for doing that.
To the city. And participants.
Is it just gonna be on Tuesday mornings?
We, that's still being worked. So, hopefully.
That might be something that you get to tackle on your, in your task force, so...
No, I go Tuesday mornings over to the church to talk to the different organizations that are there on Tuesdays. And that is one thing that we did talk about a bit and bring up. They're organizing very well over there. I'm just really happy to see that there is no bureaucracy, really. It's...
Just gets done?
Yeah. And it reminds me of kind of a barn raising or something. But they're doing a really good job. And that, the shower thing, that, it's problematic. I think they would probably agree to have it parked there, but it's just the timing.
Well, we're gonna, we're, we're going to be working with another organization so that they're not overwhelmed with one more thing.
Well, I don't think they would mind it being there. What I'm just saying is I think the need is more than just one day a week. The need is every day a week.
Well, since it's not an agendized item, we'd like you, I think you'd like to take it at the task force. Take that on the task force.
That sounds like a plan.
That'd be great.
If we, we get one moving.
Exactly. So, unless there's anything else, any other announcements, questions? Anything from staff? I'd like, really like to just take another opportunity to thank staff. I know it's been a very challenging week. There have been a lot of things that have just popped up, property tours, the PG&E shut-offs, just managed chaos. And I just want to thank you for all of your hard work this week. It's, we really appreciate what you do, and what you do for the community. So, with that, I am going to adjourn to the next regular meeting of the council meeting. Thank you, everybody. Stay cool tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.